Uh, yeah, it should be there. Okay, so, um, yeah, uh, let's start with the, uh, intentions and distractions. So, um, for me, the intention is to go mainly to go through the, uh, proposals, uh, the TNC, uh, terms and conditions for the CV, uh, proposals, and, uh, get everybody's feedback. Uh, my distraction is, um, I, I feel like I have a bit of a cold, so that's just it. And I got distracted by the, by the mouse that, uh, it's not working when I was showing the agenda. Um, uh, I pass it to you, Anka.
Thanks, Ivy. Um, yeah, I also have a little bit of a cold, and, um, that's my distraction. My intention is to sync with you, and I am super excited about, uh, this weekend and today's vote. So, yeah. And I'll pass to Grif.
GM! Uh, I'm super booked to, uh, dedic- be able to finally come to Legal Call. I feel like I missed a few, but, uh, really wanna just kind of take the time that I can to review the documents and make comments with the context that I have from the technical side, so it can be applied. And, um, and I'm distracted by the fact that there's an AMA, uh, and a bunch of people are coming to my house. So, uh, for the comments that "Giveth AMA", and so it'll be really fun, but it is a little distracting because people are arriving and talking and da-da-da. But I'm gonna stay as focused as I can. And Sam is here! So that's great. Uh, I'll pass it to Pablo. Oh, Pablo, are you there?
Hello, everyone. Uh, Happy New Year to all. I think we... I, I haven't been able to, to look at the, the comments that you put, Ivy, but I will be doing, uh, over the weekend. And, um, I will be, uh, I will have more, more time in the next days and weeks just to be more up to date in this, uh, in this great initiative.
Thanks, Pablo. Um, yeah, I think the last one is ZepT.
Yeah, thank you, Ivy. Yeah, my intention is to, I mean, I missed so many legal calls too, and just wanna see what's going on, and if there's something I can support, just come with me. And yeah, no distractions, just here to hang out, uh, and support what I can. Uh, back to you, Ivy.
Thanks. Um, so yeah, so the first in the agenda is the Committee Covenant. I just wanna give you an update that, um, it's been reviewed by Sean, and, uh, now it's being voted on on Snapshot. The only change that, um, the major change that we did there is, um, avoiding the use of words "staking", because, uh, in the, uh, challenger, uh, when, when we dispute the proposal, um, the challenger need to stake the same amount of TEC token to, uh, to cha- challenge a proposal. So the point that, uh, Sean said is that, um, staking is usually associated with, uh, rewards. So, um, we changed the word, uh, we, we didn't use the word "staking", instead we used the phrase like committing a TEC token to the, uh, to the, uh, to challenge the proposal, instead of, uh, "staking". So yeah, I just wanted to give you an update that that's the main, um, change. And the last change that we did for, uh, in the Committee Covenant before, uh, it, uh, went to, uh, Snapshot for voting. Um, so yeah, and then for the prop- uh, the big-
Just a, just one thing you said was that the challenger has to put up as much as the proposer does, but that's, uh, that's not true. It's like, um, they put up as much, um, they put twice as, well, our, our default settings are that it'll be 200 RAPDEX DAI worth of TEC tokens as a proposal deposit, and 400 RAPDEX DAI worth of TEC tokens for a challenge deposit.
Oh. Okay, so then I think I have to check again with Livia. Because I think what-
But I, those numbers might change through governance over time, so, uh, one thing that's interesting is, number one, they're, they're, they're in a stable token, so the, the amount in TEC will vary, but it'll always be still in TEC. So it's like denominated in a stable token, but they have to stake TEC tokens. And, but also governance will likely change these. Maybe we wanna make proposals easier or harder. We'll see.
Okay, so let me just, uh, because we also say, use the same wording in the, uh, in the terms and conditions that, uh, we're staking the equivalent amount. Um, uh, Zep, can you open the, uh, document? Uh, CV Proposals, uh, TNC. Thank you. So, um, yeah, I think we can go to that part later. Um, let's, uh, maybe we can go through this section one by one. We already went through this in our last legal call, Grif, but maybe others have, uh, uh, comments. So the acceptance of terms, we have edited this. Um, we, we were talking about before that we would just make a separate, uh, document for the challengers. And that's what we, uh, I will start drafting that once this, um, this, the, the TNC for proposers are clear. But if others, uh, think that they should be only in one terms and conditions, then we can just, um, integrate the challenger's, uh, eligibility as well in this document. Or does it make sense to have a separate, um, TNC for, uh, challengers?
I, I think it makes, I think it makes sense to have a different TNCs for challengers. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's a blocker to have these TNCs by launch, but we should try our best. But like, I, I think it makes sense. I, at, at launch, if we have whatever we have and we just put it up, and then we, you know, make a, we can change it later.
Oh, by the way, Grif, I saw this comment on GitHub issue that there is no place to put this, uh, terms and conditions. So I'm wondering where we want to put it.
They're, they're, they're working on it. They're working on it. It shouldn't be that hard, and it looks like, uh, it looks like Gabby put it as a priority. It's just not there yet. I think it will be there. If it's not there by the end of the week when we launch, then it will be there eventually, and we'll be able to add it.
So it's something like before the proposer, um, send the, uh, submit a proposal, they have like to tick a box that they agree with these terms and conditions, then that will be linked to this document? Is this, is, is that how it's gonna be?
Exactly. Exactly. Right now, there is something there, but there's no box. So they added their own basically disclaimer, but they didn't give us a place, which is great, you know, they didn't have that before. But now when you try to propose, uh, there's a little disclaimer box, but they haven't given us a link and a checkbox or anything, you know?
Yeah, and then what I was thinking before is that, um, this document can go to GitHub, uh, to GitBook. So, um, we can link that, uh, when they tick the box, when they propose, uh, the document will be, uh, it will go to the, uh, to GitBook where we can put this document. Unless we want to, uh, to put it, uh, in the platform itself for, for the proposal.
Uh, I think it should be in both places, for sure. And then, um, when we, the, the other place that could be added to is there's a forum post that's connected to the covenant. We could add various terms and conditions to that forum post too, and that way, at least when people sign the covenant, they're also technically signing these things as well.
Yep. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great idea. Um, okay, so, uh, ZepT, can you go back again please to the document? To the terms and conditions. Yes. Um, so yeah, so we agree that, uh, so for, uh, also for challengers, they also need to take a box that they agree with their own terms before they, uh, challenge the proposal? Is that how it's gonna be? Okay.
That's how, th- these things don't exist yet on the, on the websites, you know, but they will.
Uh, okay. Zep, can you scroll up a bit to number four? Number four. Yeah, because this is where the, uh, I have a lot of, uh, confusions here. Um, so my question here is where will the deposit go, or where, where will it be held? When the proposer, a proposer, uh, sends, uh, a deposit fee, where, where will it go? Is, is it gonna be held in the common pool? Or what happens to the deposit? Uh, Grif? Or Zep? Maybe do you, do you know?
I'm sorry, I was, I didn't realize I wasn't muted. I was muted. There, there is a separate, um, proposal, like, thing, like, like, um, holding spot? Let me see. Oh no, I can't, I can't challenge that one because I made it. Let's see. I'm just going through the gardens right now to see what they call it. But there is like, uh, there is like a deposit spot. Yeah. So they call it, "You must deposit 10,000 K." Where, where is this thing? I swear they have like a deposit manager or something, but I don't know what they call it. Oh yeah, here we go. Yeah, they call it, so for, so for proposing, uh, for making a proposal, you, they have a deposit manager. And then for challenging a proposal, yeah, I was, uh, here, I can-
Yes, right? When you challenge?
Yeah. Wait, I think you have to use the deposit manager for your garden and the deposit, and the Celest, like, deposit.
Do you have that, uh, I mean, is it already in a platform? So I just, so I can visualize how it, um, how it looks like?
Hold on, I have an expert. I have an expert-
Hello, guys!
Hi, Sam! Nice to see you!
I, I am the, I am the expert. It's true.
Perfect.
Um, okay, so when people are, um, making a deposit, where are those funds, like, to make a proposal, where are those funds held? And when people are making a challenge, where are those funds held?
They are held in a, in a special contract that is called "staking". Um, it's a kind of app, but because it's, it uses a different solidity version, it's not even a, an Aragon app. And they are like there, that, you cannot use them. It's a pity.
Is it like a challenge, is the challenge in Celest, like its own Celest area? Or is the challenge funds held in the same place that the proposal funds are held?
I mean, the, there is a, one of these... I don't, I, I am not getting the, the question.
Okay, so one thing that I just noticed here, when I go to challenge your proposal in Giveth,
What?
When I go to challenge your proposal in Giveth, it says that I, I have, "You must deposit this much give to, uh, in order to challenge a proposal, you must deposit this much honey to cover initial dispute fees."
Okay, yeah.
And so like, this deposit give, I assume goes to the deposit manager?
Yeah, it's, you already have them. I, it, you-
It says, it says I have the give, but I think really it's gonna add them here when I actually make the challenge. Here, I'll try.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
How much settlement? Zero. Come on.
Wait a sec, this amount cannot be greater than the proposal creation deposit amount. Okay, i- if, if you put zero, you are letting me cancel for free.
Yeah, that's right.
So I will go for 10.
But I, but the, why is the deposit amount 10,000? Shouldn't the deposit amount be 5,000?
It should be, yes.
Okay, cool. So that's a, that's a bug.
It's a bug.
Um, let's just, whatever. Why?
And maybe it failed because it is, uh, it is over my, my creation deposit.
Yeah.
Let's see what happens.
So now it's asking me to approve give, approve honey. Okay. And then where would the money go? I think, okay, I, I, if I had to guess, the, the give tokens will go to the, will go to, um, the deposit manager, and in this case, the TEC deposit manager is what I'd call it. That's where the funds would go. And then the honey goes to Celest. Uh, for this, but we're doing terms and conditions for TEC.
Ah, okay. Okay.
So, okay, so this, this-
It sounds accurate, because the, there is a deposit manager for each of the tokens. Yeah, so it's the T, actually it's the TEC deposit manager.
Perfect. And then the honey goes to Celest.
And the honey goes to Celest, and then if Celest rules against you, against you, you half as collateral, they give, or the TEC. And the, the fees are paid to Celest for the jurors to, to work.
Perfect.
Okay, so, so just to clarify- Just to clarify, when the proposer only sends a deposit's, um, TEC token, but the challenger deposits a TEC token as well as, um, honey, right?
Honey.
So what, for the proposer, it's only a TEC token, right?
Yep.
Okay. But, uh, and then what-
If the pro- if the proposer's proposal is challenged, then they also have to put up honey.
Oh.
What happens when it changes in the future? You will have to write back the, their, the terms and, of the service.
You mean the amounts? When the amounts change?
Not only the amount, but the mechanisms that, uh, gardens may use.
Yeah. We'd have to change the terms. I mean, but in the end, like, if we don't have some agreement, and people are like, "I didn't know you were gonna steal my money when I put up a proposal deposit. I thought it was just a gate." "We're gonna sue every single member of this DAO." "'Cause you're just a, 'cause you're just a good luckman." Yeah. Well, they could though.
Hey, can I-
Yeah.
Uh, uh, my only pants are sweaty.
It's okay. We're not muted. Sorry, guys.
Okay, so in case the proposal is challenged, the proposer also needs to, uh, to deposit-
Put up HNY.
Okay. Does it already have an, an amount?
No, I would avoid all amounts, 'cause otherwise we'll just have to change it every time governance comes up.
So the proposer needs to deposit honey tokens for, um, what it's for?
Needs to deposit honey to, s- sorry, what were you gonna say, Marco?
I was just gonna say like, just maybe you wanted to say per the rules of the, or per the procedures and rules of Celest, right? So just clear like where these rules are from, 'cause we're just, you're just sort of explaining the rules that exist now, but it's like per the applicable rules of, uh, and procedures of Celest, da-da-da-da-da. Because they're subject to change anyway, but you just wanna clarify where they're from. It's not like "are" or "we're making it up".
Yeah, good point. Yeah, 'cause we don't get to, we don't get to decide how much honey. We, as a DAO, we get to decide how much TEC, but that's it.
Yeah, I also made a quick suggestion on the, I just, I just put from XZ blockchain to like XZ chain, 'cause just the official name.
Um, thanks.
Well, now it's Nosis Chain. So that's exciting.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it still comes up XZ chain on the, on MetaMask, but you're right. I mean, I don't know when they've actually officially gonna change the name. I know it's called Nosis Chain.
Um, they're, they're pushing hard. On the BlockScout stuff, it's all Nosis Chain now, and-
Oh, really?
Yeah. And they've opened up, like, anyone who has stake can trade it for, uh, GNO, so... Yeah, it's, it's a little annoying, honestly, but I, I think we should probably start calling this Nosis Chain.
Okay, we are challenging-
Do you want me to challenge this?
I mean-
I guess we, I can just withdraw the challenge, right? You don't wanna challenge, this is your actual proposal, Sam.
Do you want to do a compelling argument, at least?
Go to Celest?
No, I'm rejecting this. I'm not challenging. I want Sam's proposal to pass.
So, um-
It will stop.
So for this one, I don't know if I say correctly, or if there's any additional information that we need to say here, why the proposer needs to, uh, deposit honey tokens if the proposal is challenged? Are there any, uh, additional, uh, important information that the proposer needs to know, why they're depositing honey tokens?
Yeah. Oh, no.
Grif? We have in our garden stuff, like, on the Giveth docs, there's the garden page of Mitchroth that explains, I think, a lot of it, and then also the, um, I wrote two forum posts in the TEC on like challenging and settle, settling and blah blah blah, so there's a lot of like information of the process in there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should steal from what Giveth wrote about this. I'll, um, I'll, I'll just copy, paste, and we can rephrase.
Okay. And, uh, and the deposit, if, if the proposal gets passed on conviction, uh, voting, uh, it won't be, uh, reversible refundable? Is this correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, but if it's withdrawn?
I mean, it's only kind of correct, it's basically correct. There, someone has to click "execute", so anyone in the world can click this button that will execute it, and upon execution, it cannot be reversed.
So technically, uh, if it gets passed, it will be executed, right?
If it gets passed, if it passes, then someone needs to click a button. But before someone clicks that button, I'm pretty sure you could still challenge it.
Okay.
So there, the-
I just added this information.
It's very, it's very much like a edge case, but...
Okay. Uh, I, I don't know, Pablo, if you think, uh, if in legal documents, we need to define all those, uh, like the gas fee, do you think we need to define it also in the terms and conditions? Do we need to provide a definition for this?
Yes, I, 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 I think so, but, um, I'm, I'm not currently watching all the time the screen. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm driving, but, but yes, I think that, uh, probably we, we will need to, to do some arrangements. I, I can do some suggestions over the, over the, the weekend for that.
Okay, I think, uh...
There, there is, there is a lot of detail around this. You put up a proposal, and then, you know, you have this many hours to put up honey, and then you have to go through the whole Celest process. So there's, there's like, yeah, I guess that's, this is kind of in the dispute and complaints procedure.
Yeah, so we can, let's go to the, uh, to the fifth, uh, to section five. Zep? Uh, can you scroll down? Yeah, I also have, uh, some questions here. So, um, yeah, if after being challenged and the proposal is withdrawn, uh, the deposit will be returned to the proposer, right? The T, uh, their token, their TEC token will be returned to them?
Yeah.
But you also mentioned that, uh, since they will deposit, uh, honey once, if the proposal is, uh, challenged, will the honey, will the honey be also returned to them? If they decide to withdraw the proposal?
No, so when, when a dispute is created, then, uh, by challenging the proposal and committing, this is, this is wrong, like, and committing TEC tokens to support the dispute? Um, the, when they, when the challenger says, "Hey, you need to, I'm gonna challenge this proposal", they also make a settlement offer. And that settlement offer could be, you lose all of your deposit if you withdraw, uh, or put up more honey. So it could be that the proposer doesn't get any of their deposit back, or it could be that the proposer gets all of their deposit back, or it could be that the proposer gets somewhere in between.
Okay, so I think we need to... So it, it, we, we can say that it's a full deposit, it's a full amount of TEC token?
I, I think we should avoid amounts everywhere, for sure. Yeah, depending on the settlement offer.
Okay. And then what happens to the, uh, challenger's deposit? If it's, uh-
The challenger's deposit is also given back to it. So like, but you gotta remember that to interact with this, they have to, there's a deposit manager, so it's not like it goes back to their wallet. It goes, it goes back to the deposit manager con- their deposit manager account, I guess. So when the, you know, the, s- someone puts money up to make a proposal, that proposal is challenged, the challenger had to put, um, TEC and honey up. Now the proposer has so much time to do two, one of two actions, either accept the settlement offer and withdraw their proposal, or, um, put up honey and challenge the challenge, right? And take it to Celest, take it to court. If they do nothing, then the challenger wins and they lose their deposit.
And then the challenger gets back the deposit if the challenger wins?
The challenger's settlement offer is automatically accept, well, the challenge, challenge, the challenger's settlement offer is basically accepted, and someone has to come and push a button to give the challenger their deposit.
So I think that-
The proposer-
Then that information should go to the, uh, to the terms and conditions for the challenger. And it doesn't have to be here, because, um, this is for proposers, okay?
Well, the, I think it does need to say that if the settlement time runs out, you will lose your proposal deposit. Well, the, the challenger's offer will stand. And so if the challenger said, "Hey, I get half of your deposit", then you'll get half of your deposit back, and the challenger will get the other half. then you'll get half of your deposit back and the challenger will get the other half. It's kind of like this counter offer, you know?
I I wrote something here that Celeste, uh if the proposal is not withdrawn, is it enough to say that Celeste will be used to settle the dispute and uh this will cover those information?
No, because if the proposal is not withdrawn, if if nothing happens, then the proposer loses their their fund, the then the proposal, the proposer loses their money if the challenger asked for their money. So it's not it after being challenged, if the and the proposal is it's not withdrawn, it's more like and if after being challenged, you as a proposer choose to challenge the challenge, then Celeste will be used to settle the dispute. If the if after being challenged and the proposal is not withdrawn, if you do nothing, then you just lose and the proposal is withdrawn. You know what I mean?
Wait, let me. So this will be two different things. Counter challenge that.
And this is the royal you, right? Cause this we're talking to the proposers.
Oh, yeah, and you decide, yeah. So if after being challenged and the proposal is not withdrawn, you lose the the deposit?
Yeah.
I was thinking it it might be worth here just having a quick glossary of the actors, you know? Proposal, proposer, challenger, like just give a quick, you know?
Oh, yeah, we I think if we is will it be helpful to have a different section for that? Because we uh provide the definition of those terms in different sections, like in number one, in section one, that that's where we um define the proposer. Uh, I mean, in section three. So do you think uh decentralized, if we it will be uh helpful if we have a separate section just for the definitions?
Or maybe just, I see it says proposer or you. Yeah, I got we T. If that's all we're talking about, I guess that's fine. It just uh it just seems strange to go between proposer and you. But anyway, it's a mi- it's a minor point, unless there's other actors, because I was thinking you might wanna explain the other ac- the other actors, right?
Yeah. I think this one, the other actor is the challenger and we uh.
Is the challenger, right? And then the people that are taking actions. But maybe you don't.
Yeah, the only the only other actors besides the proposer and the challenger are the jurors of Celeste.
Yeah, that would be an important actor to put.
That's the Celeste keepers, I guess.
Here, so we need to define, provide a definition for this. Okay, so Zep, can you scroll down to section? Section five. Yeah. Oh, okay. So while Griff is um anything that maybe. Uh, actually, section seven, there the succeeding sections like seven to um to ten, I feel like some of there might be um redundant points here, but I want to ask Pablo for help because um I don't know what's the difference between uh indemnity and uh these things. Cause I I was reading through this, since I only took this um terms and conditions from uh from where did I take this? Yeah, from Nosis and uh Gitcoin. And as I read through them, I feel like um yeah, they have different sections like this, but when I read through them, I feel like some parts are are already redundant, but I'm not sure. So if if Pablo, from the legal perspective, you if you can help us uh review um um statements here? If there's any redundances.
Sure, sure. Sure, I can I can take a over a week.
Yeah, I think that's it. And then for uh where's the other? Let me find my other questions. I think partnership is okay. Scroll down, Zep, uh the protected parties, this one. Uh, section eight, yeah, eight point two. Though we already mentioned this in in the proposal fees that uh the gas fee is not refundable or reversible. Um, I added, I slipped into this um subsection, but I don't know what protected parties mean in in uh in other in Nosis. I think I got this from Nosis. So I don't know if we still need to add this information here.
Is that directed at Pablo?
Um, it's actually for you and Pablo.
I mean, I have no idea. I think redundancy is fine personally, but I I I would ask Pablo.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Being redundant is fine.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, those are all the sections. So I don't know if anyone thinks that some something is missing from the terms and conditions, so we can also add. Uh, maybe it's worth to look at the uh, Zep, can you scroll, can you scroll up, please? And can you go to Git at the top of the page, the first page? Can you check, uh can you click on the Gitcoin's uh terms and also Nosis DAO? And we can see if, because I didn't take all the sections from these two DAOs, but um I only took a few portions. So I don't, maybe we can scroll the uh scroll through that and see if there's any section that might also be uh needed in our own terms. Uh, usually it's in the letter part. Um. Yeah, payment restrictions on use. Warranty disclaimer. So these are the those um sections that I skipped. Licenses. I don't think we need that. And the arbitration. Oh, this one, the international users. I I was thinking if I should include this, but since we are not registered in any state, I don't think this is uh this will be uh useful for us.
I I we're, are we gonna try to register in Alderney?
For common stock? Uh, that's.
Uh, for for T E C as well.
Oh, I haven't.
I mean, I think I think we should, uh right now, the T E C is registered in Switzerland, I or not registered, but we just kind of say Switzerland. I think, but we might want to own Alderney.
I have an an awarding, a special awarding for for that kind of situations, so um I can add it without any problem, yeah.
Okay, so I will add the international users to these sections.
Yeah, it's important to to add the section when I have a awarding for that.
I'm gonna add it here. Users. Um, Pablo, you will add the uh text here, right? Gonna put a comment.
Right.
And I will check Griff, um what will be the process for uh registering um T E C in Alderney. Okay, and uh can you scroll down more, Zep? Yeah, I think that's it. And then for uh can you check Nosis? And scroll down. Let's see if they have, if there are sessions that we also want to integrate in our own terms. Uh, scroll down some more. And yet, yeah, they have this section where they defined all those um term uh those words. That's why I asked uh decentralized if you think that would be helpful, but I don't think we have a lot of the uh a lot of uh words that need to be defined, just the actors. Uh, oh, okay.
Can you go back up really quick to the dissolution of of? That was interesting. I think that might be worth stating, that the T E C could be dissolved by way of govern, you know, by through governance. I think that's worth stating as well.
Okay, let's add it. Okay. Yeah, I think that's a waiver, we don't need that or.
What is no third party rights? Uh, that's interesting.
I think Gitcoin also has this section and it looks um simpler in Gitcoin terms.
Yeah, I think that might be worth, that might be worth adding as well. I mean, I don't know, unless Pablo's like, nah, you don't need that, but I think there is something to it.
Yes, yes, I I agree that we need to add that section most.
Okay, so I will add.
Yeah, I can just work the wording.
Okay, I'm just gonna add those um sections and then Pablo, you'll be taking care of the uh international user section.
Right.
Okay. Um, I guess that's the end. Yeah, I think um that's all. And um is there anything else that we need to cover? Cause I'm thinking of wrapping the call earlier so we can prepare for the AMA for common staff.
Nice.
So, yeah, if anyone else wants to uh raise a concern or has some um additional input? Okay, I think I.
No, Ivy, thank you so much for organizing this. You're doing a really fantastic job.
Thanks, Griff. And yeah, I think uh that's all and I hope everyone uh gets a has a nice weekend. Thanks, everyone, for joining.
Thank you, Ivy.
Thank you, Ivy.